Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
All right, I have, first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve that.
Second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion or changes? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves. Second on the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda tonight? No? Okay. Public input. I have one public input card. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council tonight? No? Okay. So I have, let's see here, Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn Underwood. Apologies. Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, is that correct? Okay, all right. Does not choose to address the members, but would like that their position be entered into the record. We are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. All right. All right, presentations is first up. Dockless Bike Share Overview from Community Development.
Mary Ellis?
Mayor Marlin.
Just a comment to provide some context for this. We've, as you'll hear in the presentation, we've been approached by several companies who want to implement dockless bike sharing, and Urbana-Champaign and the University have been working together to learn from the lessons of other communities and the experience of other communities.
Thank you. In addition, we have Art Rapp in attendance from St. Joe, who's a trustee, and also the Chairman of Park, so thank you for joining us.
As the mayor just mentioned, there are companies that are interested in bringing dockless bike share to Urbana-Champaign and the University of Illinois, and we have been working with our counterparts in Champaign and the University on some draft regulations for these types of systems. Just as a brief introduction, these types of systems don't require any public funding to set up, but research does suggest that regulating these systems would make sense to mitigate any negative impacts on the community. So tonight, we're presenting, and really would like feedback from the committee as we work forward on these drafts, around this draft agreement with our counterparts in Champaign and the University. Okay, so, you might be asking yourselves, what is dockless bike share? Before we get into that, I want to take a step back and talk about what people might generally think of when you think of bike share, which are the docked systems. So these are the types of systems that have been around for past 15, 20, 15 to 20 years or so. These are systems like they have up in Chicago, the divvy system, as you see on your screens. And these are really, so they, they're systems that have docks, which are the individual, the individual parking spaces for the bikes, and then you have stations, which are the collection of these parking spaces. So this system, or these systems are really a station-tostation approach to bike share. Essentially, you get a bike from one station, you ride it to another station, and then you dock it there. So you go from one station to another. And when it works well, it works quite well. It does have certain drawbacks. The first being that you always have to have a bike at the, at your current location, and then there has to be an open dock at the destination, or someplace near your destination. Also, these systems tend to be expensive. These docks are pricey. I think they run from about $7,000 to $10,000 for each station, so the cost can add up. And you also have to do what's called rebalancing. So this van you see in the background is there, not just to look good, but it's also has somebody in it who will get out, take bikes from one station, bring them to another station where they're needed, so that it, that helps alleviate the issue of bikes being where they need to be, and not having stations that are full when people get there. But that's also costly to do. Another issue with these systems is that if you want to expand geographic coverage to underserved neighborhoods, to areas that might not have the demand that, that might not be the highest demand, it's, you know, it's just as costly to expand into those neighborhoods because you have to put more docks, you know, more docks in other areas. I pulled a map from the City of Chicago. They've actually done a really good job of expanding their system over the years, but it's just interesting to look at, and you see it's pretty orderly. There are stations at, you know, at a lot of major intersections. You see more on the southeast part of this, which is down near the Loop. That's where they initially started, and then they sort of expanded out from, you know, from the Loop area into the neighborhoods. So let's contrast that system with the dockless system. So in this picture, you see dockless bikes from two different operators. They're parked at a regular, at a regular bike rack. These bikes, sort of if you follow the hand here, so there's a locking mechanism on these bikes, so the bikes actually lock to themselves. They're not, they're not locked to the bike rack, but it is nice if people park at the bike racks, because those are usually sited where it's appropriate to park a bike, and it's not going to be in somebody's way. So these systems, there are, hence the, you know, we call it dockless because they have no docks. So there are no docks, there are no stations. It's a point-to-point system instead of a station-tostation system. So you find a bike nearby, you ride it to your destination, and then you park it. You can find bikes either just by seeing them, or you can use, you can use the app that, it'll have a map on there, and it'll show where available bikes are. Actually, I pulled another map to sort of contrast with the docked system. This is an app that somebody put together in Washington DC, which takes all the data from all the different bike, dockless bike share operators, and puts them into, into one. And actually, I think this one pulls in, yeah, I think those red and yellow ones that look like CB, I think those are city bikes, so it also pulls in, they have a docked system there too, so this gives you the best of both worlds. But you can have, you can pull in all that information, so this would be even more useful than, say, using a single app from a single company. But these types of systems address a lot of the issues with the docked systems. Since there are no docks, you're not going to have a dock that's full when you get to your destination, so there should always be a place to park. Hopefully, at the start of your trip, there's also a bike nearby that you can hop on, so you can make that trip, but you don't run into those issues with full docks. It's also relatively cheaper without the docks and those, you know, and the cost of docks. It's, you know, it's decidedly cheaper. I think that's one main reason that these companies aren't asking for public funding, whereas with the docked system, those pretty much always require public funding. Also, if you want to expand the geographic coverage with these systems, you can go, these bikes can go anywhere, so you don't have to worry about spending more money to expand the system into, into other neighborhoods, into areas where the demand might not, you know, might not justify an entire station and that expense. So really, and they seem to be more equitable from the get-go, because they really can go anywhere, as long as you have a smartphone, you can use, you can use the system. Okay, so as I mentioned at the beginning, there is interest in bike share. There have been, in our community, there have been at least seven operators, I think at last count, and again, none of them have asked for, for public money. Now, we have done some research, and I'd like to give credit to my counterparts, Ben Leroy at the City of Champaign, and Lily Wilcock at the University of Illinois. They did the lion's share of research for these dockless bike share systems, so I'd like to, I'd like to thank them for doing that research. And what we found in our research was that there are many, many communities that either have these systems in place, or are considering them. This map is by no means exhaustive. These are all just a list of, the yellow cities are, are cities that have, have these in progress or on the ground, that we did not study. The red dots just represent the cities we studied. Those are Seattle, Dallas, Washington DC, and South Bend. And we picked South Bend because that's a university town, more of a scale as Urbana-Champaign. So we spoke to staff and to operators in each of those four cities, and we really believe that for dockless bike share to be successful in Urbana-Champaign, there should be a common set of rules. That's what we've been, been working on. Just some highlights from our research. We found that there were very few parking problems that were reported in South Bend. They were more frequent in Seattle. And then Dallas, which has the most dockless bikes of any community in the US, and they also have no regulations for dockless bike share. They've seemed to have the most parking problems. Another thing we found is that the operators of these systems have been quite responsive to going out and moving bikes when they've been asked to, and to pick up bikes that are broken, and take them off the streets, and get them fixed. And we found that complaints were, were pretty minimal to city staff in Seattle and in South Bend. More so, there were more complaints in Dallas, to the point where they're considering regulating these, these systems there. Now, this is my only slide with a bunch of text. I'm doing it to help the viewers at home, so they can follow along if they don't have the staff memo in their hands. But the proposed regulations that, that is in the draft intergovernmental agreement that we've been working on, are these listed on the slide here? Also, I'll just go through them, I think, pretty briefly. So we're proposing an annual license fee that would cover all three, all three of the entities in the agreement, and that would be $600 as proposed. There would also be a $1,000 security deposit that each operator would have to give to each city. That would be used to pay for any, any small-scale expenses that the cities incur as a result of these systems. The university also requires what's called a concession agreement for, for businesses to operate on university ground, so the operators would have to get those. And then the period would be, again, annual, and it would be valid July 1st through June 30th. For the operators, for the operators, we're proposing, from the start, a cap of 500 bikes per operator, and this could be increased, or it could be reduced if the parties agree. The bicycles would need to meet minimum safety and operational standards set forth by the federal government. They need to have front and rear lights. And then operators would have a three-hour timeframe to remove improperly parked bikes during peak hours, and those are listed in your, in your memo. And it's essentially, so it's 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 10:00 on, sorry, Monday through Thursday, 10:00 to 10:00 on Friday, and then noon to 10:00 PM on Saturday. And then all other hours would be off-peak hours, and they'd have a longer time to, to remove bikes for those. They'd be required to have a local staff contact, so that if, if we, for instance, at the city had to contact some, somebody from the operator, we'd have somebody local to deal with. And there'd also need to be contact information that would be available to anybody, so that if somebody saw an improperly parked bike, say, then they could contact the company, and they wouldn't need to have the app installed. Of course, they would, operators would have to have insurance. We'd request that, that they send us data monthly, which would be useful for planning purposes especially. And then, we're not gonna, or we're not proposing parking regulations in the intergovernmental agreement, because, as you might imagine, the, the requirements for parking in downtown Urbana are probably different than what you would want for, for the quad on the university, and are different than what you might want even in downtown Champaign, just given the configuration of sidewalks and things. So that would be left to individual agencies to, to set parking regulations. And then, of course, we'd have provisions to revoke licenses if an operator was consistently not following the, the regulations that they've, they've agreed to. So as I, as I said, for next steps, we're here tonight to get feedback from the committee to, to help us finalize the, the draft intergovernmental agreement, and then we'd plan to return in a couple of weeks with, with the draft, with the draft IGA, and then maybe adopt an ordinance in May, so that we could get, so that we could meet the timeline of getting these operators in here by, by July.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions? Dean?
I know that this, I know that this proposal means well, but anytime, in my opinion, that you have a shared resource, it ends up being a disaster. I've looked into this a little bit. Have you seen some of the pictures of the places where this has gone wrong, especially in other countries, like Australia?
Yeah, of course.
It looks like piles of shopping carts all over the place. Between vandalism, theft, people that don't care, I don't know what the consequence is if you don't return the bike someplace that you're supposed to return it. Like, say you have it set up for City, City Hall, or Public Works, or whatever, but what if they leave it at Taco Bell, and they lock it right on the accessibility ramp for wheelchairs, and it's, and it's off-peak hours? They call, you've got 12 hours to get that removed. I'd be pretty upset if I was the business owner. 1,500 bikes is a lot of bikes in the community, and I see it just becoming an ugly, basically litter. So I have concerns about that. I'll hit you with several of my questions, and let you respond, so we don't go back and forth all night. Liability concerns, I know that you mentioned they have to carry commercial insurance, but are we going to be assured that somebody rents one of these and gets killed on one? That we're not somehow going to be, you know, lined up in that lawsuit somewhere, like, you know, like it typically goes? I guess, I guess those are my concerns summed up.
Thank you.
Eric?
So I also went online, and I saw the disaster stories. I saw the thousands of bikes that had been vandalized in France, and company pulled out. But it also appears to be working very well in some other cities. And I do believe that this is a function of the local culture. I, my guess is that Champaign, Urbana, University of Illinois has a good culture for this, that, that the system will be respected and, and used properly, and will be an advantage to the city. But, of course, you don't know until you implement it. But that's, that's my feeling about the kind of community we are, and there, sometimes there are decisions where it is, if you have good reason to hope, if you have good reason to be confident that a good outcome is likely, it's really better to make decisions based on that hope and that expectation than on the fear that something might go wrong. So I'm inclined to, to consider this favorably. I do have a question. In all the things that I've read, I didn't really see any numbers on how much the user pays to use the bike. What, what are those rates typically?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. Typically, it'll be a dollar for an hour. I think some places might be a dollar for a half hour. And then, some operators have a reduced fee for students, say. So it'd be like half that, like 50 cents for, for a half hour or an hour.
You have another comment?
Bill?
Yeah, at the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we discussed this in December, and there were similar concerns, I think, about, you know, how it would be regulated, but I think overall, a really optimistic look, partly because this type of bike share is a lot more, a lot less expensive, so it's available to more people, and like you said, you don't have to have the docks all over the place, so anybody can usually take it to, to their, to their home, you know, and back next morning, I guess, if you leave it in your front yard. I'm not sure exactly how that works. But I think, at the time, we discussed it, there were maybe three or four companies interested, and now there's seven, and the 500 per company does seem high. I wondered if you guys had reconsidered the limit, considering how many more companies, and maybe all of them wouldn't really come, and maybe just after you get two or three, bringing 500, maybe they decide that was enough or something. But the other question that I thought of was, is it set up so that it's automatically renewable every year for them? Is there a way for us to, if we decide that we, we just want to have two or three, to be able to pick the ones that have been most responsive, and say, you know, these are the two or three we're going to go with from now on? And, you know, is there a way to tell somebody they can't renew the next year, even though they've maybe kept up with the minimum requirements, but we've just decided that managing four companies or five companies might be too much? So that might be something to think about. The other thing we discussed quite a bit was geosensing, where a company will say you can't take the bike outside this specific region. And I think it was, it was discussed, they would probably do that for Champaign-Urbana overall, so that they wouldn't, somebody wouldn't be putting a bike in their car and taking it to Ranthool or someplace, and disappearing with it or something. But my concern would be that they would make the region too small, and not include all parts of our town. So I would be interested in making sure that it would at least be available to every place within Urbana borders. Then, the rebalancing we talked about, there'd be some need for rebalancing. We thought there would be probably some creative, creative technological solutions to that, maybe offer discounts to people that want to ride it the other way, kind of like you do with rental vehicles. Sometimes you get a really good deal on a rental car because you're going the right direction. Could probably do something like that with the bike, since it's all on your app, on your phone app anyway. So just to be clear, are smartphones always required to rent these, or do some company, have some companies come up with a solution where, I mean, the GPS itself is in the bike? Is there some kind of card somebody could buy to get trips without having a smartphone? And same sort of thing, same question with credit cards? Do you have to have a credit card?
I haven't seen any, any companies where you can use them without a smartphone. I did notice, I, I was sent a report earlier today that I haven't been able to dig into completely, that compared more systems throughout the US, and a couple of those, so they had a nice table, like a matrix of the regulations, and a couple of those communities, it looked like they had a provision that said it needed to be available without a smartphone, but I haven't dug into those regulations to see what the regulations.
It seems like it could be a competitive advantage if they came up with a solution on their own. I don't know if it's something we'd have to require, but definitely seems like there's, there ought to be solutions for that. One of the other things they brought up at BPAC was how it encourages new users of bikes, and a lot of times, people that, you know, don't want to invest in a bike on their own will try it out, and decide they like riding, so it encourages a lot of new, new riders, but that can also be a challenge if they aren't used to the rules, especially if maybe they're from other countries or something, and really haven't ever ridden a bike in the US before, or, you know, familiar with even any of our traffic laws. So we realize there'd be an education component to, to that, and hopefully be able to offer classes, or something like that. The other, on the, on the data collection, I was kind of surprised that companies would be willing to turn over all that, but if they are, that'd be great. But as long as they are, I think we'd also be interested in knowing where people are going, especially for planning purposes. You know, that's something that's always been kind of a challenge, is figuring out if people are using the bike routes that we've laid out, if they're using the bike lanes, or if they're, you know, it'd be interesting, once we spend millions of dollars on Green Street, if people decide they like using Illinois Street better, and don't use our nice new Green Street bike paths. So things like that. But yeah, I know, there's also going to be privacy issues probably, presumably, I guess, when you download the app, you have to give up all your rights, like you do with Facebook and everything else now. But we wouldn't want individual-level data, we'd just want aggregated data, as far as how many trips per, per road segment, or something like that. Some of those other data points, I can see the usefulness of it, but if they, if they want to trade, I think I'd be willing to trade some of the others to get the map. That seems to be like it would be more important. I think that covers most of my comments for now. Thanks.
Dean?
So currently, with the, the bike rack system, is there any difference with how that works with credit cards, the app, et cetera? What, what if any differences are there?
Like with the docked systems?
Yeah.
I, again, each, each system's going to be different, but I think that some of those operators have it where you can, you certainly can use it with just a credit card, or not even, maybe even like prepaid credit card, so you don't even have to, you know, have the credit built up to get a credit card. So I, I think they've, they're, they're probably more advanced on that front than, than maybe these dockless systems are. But I haven't done an extensive study of, of the payment options for those systems, but I, I don't think you need an app for most of those.
Just curious why this, the dock system works, because you don't hear, or at least I don't hear complaints about the dock systems. I wonder why it is with dockless, that people feel that they can just leave them laying anywhere, or leave them locked in an inappropriate place. Where's the teeth? Because something must be going on here for people to bring them back.
Well, I mean, with the docked system, you have to end your ride within a certain amount of time at, at a dock. So if you don't bring the bike back, then you get charged probably hundreds of dollars. So that's, I think that's the teeth.
But if you had 20 bucks on your prepaid card, what are they going to do?
I'm not sure. That's a good question. But you're right, there hasn't, well, I haven't heard anything, any issues with that, so.
So are all the docks currently on campus? The ones that we have?
We don't have any, any docked bikes. No. One reason that this system, or that these types of systems are, are appealing to us is, we've been talking about the docked systems for, I think, when I got here in 2014, I heard that we had been talking about them for several years at that point, and we just couldn't find the money to, you know, to pay for a system like that. Nobody really had the, had the stomach to put the public funds up for it.
Well, I'm almost sure you guys will pass this, because you're all about bicycles, so, but let me give you a couple of, I guess, suggestions that, if you do pass it, that maybe you maybe you can, you can implement that might make it better. One of the problems that caused the biggest issues in places like Dallas and Australia and some of the other places I read about was that these companies tried to outcompete each other as aggressively as they could. So they flooded it with bicycles. So I noticed you said there was a 500 per community, Champaign 500, U of I 500, Urbana 500. If we let them start trying to outdo each other, the bikes are going to just be everywhere. And I think 12 hours is, even three hours could be too long, if you're a business and somebody puts one right in front of your wheelchair ramp or something like that. 12 hours certainly would be very aggravating. So you might cap, excuse me, it might cap how many bikes you let in. That might mitigate the problem.
Okay. And I want to clarify, we're talking about 500 per operator. So it's not, not per community. So, yeah, I just want to specify that. So if the seven operators did come, that would be 3,500 bikes, not 1,500. So.
Wonderful.
I'll definitely take, take your comments into consideration, yeah.
Feel free to not be equitable with Ward Six. We're quite happy with, without them.
Dennis?
So I just wondered about two other things that haven't been touched on. Have the dockless bike companies found a lot of theft of their vehicles? I know that on a college campus, there is bicycle theft. It's not uncommon. In neighborhoods, it's not uncommon. If you have these commercial bikes sitting around in various locations that may be propped up against a tree in front of somebody's home, or wherever they decide to leave them, is it, have they had a problem with theft from their base?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So because of, so no, they haven't, none of the companies have had any issue with theft. And I think because, a couple of things, you have a branded bike that has, you know, it wouldn't have much resale value on the secondary market. I think the components are probably unique to each bike. So you might not be able to, you know, to take parts off of it and use it on another bike if you were just using it for scrap. The second thing is that these all have GPS. They're all, all have GPS in them, so they have to, so that the app works and you know where a bike is going to be. So if somebody were to steal one of these bikes, they would have a essentially built-in theft tracking system. So I think they'd be easy to, easy to track down.
Great. And another thing is, so like, I live a couple blocks from a supermarket, and a lot of times, not a lot of times, but three or four times a year, I find a shopping cart, you know, in the street in front of my house or something. Somebody has just left it there. Or, so I'm wondering if you woke up and found one of these bikes in front of your house, and it wasn't yours, and you didn't know how to get, how it got there. If you came home from work and there's one laying against your porch, what would, you know, all you need to do is what, call the company and say, we have a problem here?
Yeah, that's the, no, that's the optimal case. That's what we would hope for. And that's one reason that we want to have something on the bike that says, call this number, don't call the city of Urbana, you know, or the Urbana Police to come and remove this. So hopefully, hopefully it would work out where people would call the company and the company would come and remove it within, you know, within a few hours.
Eric?
So if we were to decide that there's a certain number of bikes that we could absorb, and this would be presumably based on experience from other communities, would it make sense, and this was really a smaller number than the companies might think they'd like to put in, would it make sense, instead of having a fixed fee for the license, to have them bid for a license? And, I mean, just a thought, because that is, that is a procedure that cities do for other kinds of licenses or other kinds of sort of privileges for operating in the city. I don't know if that's a good idea, but it's just maybe something to think about. And I guess the other thing to think about is, should it become a problem that bikes are left in inappropriate places, maybe there should be, you know, a system of parking tickets for bikes? I guess there is already. I mean, you can get a parking ticket now for leaving a bicycle where you shouldn't. You can get a ticket from the, from the university police. So I would think that that kind of situation could be dealt with in the same fashion as, as parking an automobile in an inappropriate place.
Jim?
Let me shed a little light on the regulatory aspect on this issue. A draft IGA, intergovernmental agreement, was prepared. And I had the good fortune of meeting with Kevin and the representative from Champaign, Ben, and from the university, Lily, on this issue. And we went over it. We went over the, their draft intergovernmental agreement, you know, quite thoroughly. And in fact, well in advance of that meeting, I reviewed several drafts of intergovernmental agreements. And I had a number of very serious concerns, most of which you are raising. So I took it upon myself to virtually redraft, I think Kevin, that would be an accurate description, would it not? Redraft the intergovernmental, thank you. Redraft the intergovernmental agreement. I passed it on to Kevin. And Kevin, did you get it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. And Ben, if he's here, I don't see if it's Ben here, I guess not. I have yet to receive comments. Essentially, the regulatory scheme would be, or would involve two layers. There would be a set of common ordinances which the cities would adopt. Then there would be additional regulatory ordinances that each city could adopt themselves. For example, designating where and how these dockless bicycles could be parked. And what would happen if they are separate from calling people out to remove them or replace them? How the city could remove them to a different location. And at least in my agreement, if I remember correctly, there would be a cost that the city could charge for its resources at having to respond. There would be fines, city fines, could be above and beyond whatever is agreed to in the intergovernmental agreement. In terms of your concern, Dennis, if bikes show up on private property, the ordinances to, and the agreement is to regulate their use and parking on right-of-way and city/university-owned operated or leased property. A homeowner clearly would have the right, without hesitation, to do whatever he or she wants with the bicycle, including trash it, because it's illegally parked. It's trespass, especially if you have your property posted. I don't think we'll have labels that say, don't call Champaign or Urbana or University Police Department. But there will be labels on the bicycles indicating where somebody should call. And unless we've changed the intergovernmental agreement that I drafted, it's two hours for response and then 12 hours in off-peak periods. But if one of the police departments is called out, that jurisdiction would have the right to assess whatever fee or fine that they provided by ordinance or that their resources would dictate. I couldn't tell you what it would cost for an Urbana officer if he or she chose to move the bike, what that resource fee. But we charge resource fees all the time, especially in connection with special event permits. Eric, though I didn't address it specifically in the draft intergovernmental agreement, another approach could be for the cities and the university to cap the number of their licenses, just like we do with our liquor ordinance. And if somebody, you know, whoever gets to apply for those first, get them. And then after that, if another company wants to come in, they'd have to apply. But more importantly, there will be an application process, there will be a vetting process, there will be a due process process. The $600 fee that's provided right now in the licensing would be whoever the lead agency, there'll be a lead agency, Champaign or Urbana, will get half of the fee. And then the university and the other municipality that is not the lead agency would get 150 bucks for the license, for the license application fee. Each community would get $1,000. Now, when I talked with the good folks who are putting this together, Lily and Kevin and Ben, I had actually proposed a $10,000 bond, cash bond, posted with the city, placed in an escrow, that has to be maintained at all times. So any drawing down, the city would have the authority, or Champaign or whoever, would have the authority to draw down on that bond. But I was advised that the companies probably wouldn't go that high. But even if it's $1,000 or $2,000 per community, at least the IGA, as I drafted it, would require, the IGA, by the way, provides basically the common structure for adopting the common ordinances between the two cities. And any rules, policy, or regulations that the university adopts. As I say, beyond that, the jurisdictions would be free to adopt their, in addition, regulatory schemes. But even that would require them to maintain at all times the $1,000. And they'd have to be noticed. There would be a consortium-type operation. I modeled some of it after what most of you know as our UC2B consortium, where the three jurisdictions each identify two individuals to serve on the, I'll call it consortium for lack of a better term, provided that the first one term would be one year, the other person's term would be two years, and then from then on, they'd be two years. So we would have staggered terms for each of the appointees. When decisions have to be made and recommendations have to be made to the cities and the university, certain recommendations would require a supermajority where at least one representative from each community concurs in whatever that, and then whatever additional votes are needed. Again, it's up to, you know, you all and Champaign and the university to decide what you all want to do with that. So there's, I perceive, and I have not seen other communities' agreements, but from what I perceive, a little bit tighter regulatory framework that Lily, Ben, and Kevin are contemplating than the impression, I have not seen, as I've seen other cities' regulatory arrangements, but I think they're a little tighter than what they provide. Would you agree?
Yes.
By the way, Lily.
Eric? It just occurred to me, I too had a lot of the same concerns that have been voiced tonight. But the idea that there's somehow a restriction on how far out of town one can ride these bikes led to the question of, are these appropriate for riding on the Kickapoo Rail Trail? And if so, can a person ride to St. Joe and back, or even to Danville and back on one of these bikes? Is there any kind of GPS limitation or location limitation?
We haven't gotten that far in, well, I guess, no operator has said that, has said anything about limiting the geographic scope that I'm aware of. So at this point, I guess my response would be, somebody could ride out there, it'd be on their own dime. You know, the 50 cents an hour or a dollar an hour, or whatever. Yeah, I'm sure you could ride them out there. But if the, if the companies did want to, want to restrict it, then, then they could at this point.
And then I had one comment from a resident who asked that we share it tonight. And this is Doug Wolfersberger. He lives in South Urbana. He just returned from Scottsdale, Arizona, where they have several companies with dockless bike shares. And this is a community where the bikes came into the community without any regulatory environment whatsoever. And they've had some real problems with bikes clogging the landscape, sidewalks, bike trails, park entrances, city buildings. He encourages the council to look around before approving this. Make sure you have a strict definition of where a person can dock the bike. Make sure you have in place a punitive structure for the company if the clients don't abide by the ordinance. So Scottsdale residents are up in arms now, and their city council is going back to put regulations into place. So I think, again, we're, we're taking a proactive approach here. So Scottsdale would be another community to look at.
Dean?
So if I'm reading this right, I made a couple mistakes earlier, $600 is the license fee per operator agency? Is that?
Correct.
Is that money to be used to pay Urbana staff for whatever management they have to do for this?
That, that would be to cover administrative costs.
Boy, that doesn't seem like that would go very far.
Well, there would be the other cost, the $1,000 deposit that, that Jim spoke about, that would have to be, it would have to be replenished. That would go to, say, removing bikes that were parked improperly.
Well, yeah, I was thinking of the day-to-day tasks that somebody's going to, I don't know who would be taking this. Do you? Who would, who in staff would do this?
I might do it. But, but in terms of, so I think that fee would be mostly to review and approve the licenses each year. So our, if we're not the lead agency, then the effort on, for us, would be pretty minimal. It would probably just be reviewing the work that Champaign had done to review, to review the applications. And then we'd just say, these look good. They're meeting all the, all the requirements.
Okay. And I think there will be some calls to the police department, because if they call and it doesn't get removed pretty quick, they're going to be upset, and then they're going to call MedCat and complain, but.
Yeah, and that might be an education piece. But even if we educate folks really well, there probably still would be some occasional calls.
And there's no other way to rent one without a smartphone?
At this point, it seems like that's, that's the operational model for, for all of the companies, is a smartphone app. So you just walk up, either type in the number or scan a code that's on the bike, and then it, the lock unlocks, and then you take it.
Bill?
For the case you stayed in South Bend, did they have multiple companies, or did they just have one?
They just had one company at this, or at least at the point that we studied it.
I talked to somebody from St. Petersburg, Florida, Tampa area. They just had one too. They, and they had 500 or 600 bikes for that large area. I still think our, if companies actually bring that many bikes, it's going to be too many bikes. And if there's, you know, if there's several companies. I wonder if maybe a lower number for probationary period or something might work. I think it'd be a really poor use of police resources if police had to do anything with this. I think, I don't know, if we have parking enforcement and police have, we do have one police officer now responsible for picking up stray bikes. I don't think this would really count as that, for that program, because those stray bikes go into a different category. They're basically lost or stolen, need to be returned. But, you know, I think hopefully traffic enforcement would be able to handle it if there is a problem. The other thing, I think it's important to figure out where we're going to have people park these. When I was in Washington DC, there were several companies, but I think they were doing a trial period at the time I was there. So there were several companies with bikes, and they were all really well organized and enrobed. But that was probably partly because it was a trial, and they had a lot of people out walking around the streets and organizing them, because they didn't, they wanted to make sure that they got approved. But I think if we can make it clear where the bikes belong, at least then those of us who feel responsible and we see one that's, you know, just a few yards out of place, but it's blocking a sidewalk, we might just pick it up and put it where it belongs. And that would help avoid some problems, too. I guess with the, I still don't really know how the ticketing's going to work. It does seem like $1,000 isn't going to go very far. If we start charging $100 or something every time we have to do something with a bike, and how that would translate to the last user, if the company, you know, points a finger at the last user and said, you left it there, so we're going to charge you something. And I'm not sure how that trickles down. But just to be clear, how these, these don't have to get, most of them, I think there's one company where you actually have to lock it to something. But most of them just have a lock on the back tire that kind of locks. a lock on the back tire that kinda locks it in place, so it doesn't roll around, and you can't ride it off. But then once it, once you scan, it unlocks, then you can roll it around. So, if it is out of place, you can usually just pick it up. You have to carry it a little bit. Some of them are pretty heavy, that's like, one reason why you wouldn't really wanna ride it to St. Joe or Danville, but maybe St. Joe, but it'd be kinda a heavy bike to ride to Danville. So, yeah, just more concerns, I guess.
Jim.
A final thought on regulation. The thousand dollars, as I indicated, would have to be replenished at the request of the jurisdiction whose, you know, fund is being used in their jurisdiction. I believe the IGA also provides a floor at which that triggers replenishment even without a call. The other thing is if this, the, the IGA provides that if a jurisdiction is experiencing problems with a company or a particular company's bikes, there clearly is the authority to revoke the license and compel them to remove their bikes from service. My guess on this is probably similar to the transportation network situation which existed a number of years ago. Of course, there was Uber, and I think it's Lyft, but in some jurisdictions, there were some other of these companies that kinda fell by the wayside because of either the technology was expensive to develop and then monitor. And my guess is if there're gonna be seven companies with thirty-five-hundred bikes eventually circulating throughout the, the three areas, Champaign University and Urbana, my guess is some of them will fall to the wayside. Either they will be absorbed by the other companies, or they'll just fall by the wayside. I think competition will eat up some of the operators.
All right, you have time for a few more questions, and then I think there's some members in the audience, so let's go through a final round. Dennis?
Two quick ones. Are we the first people to review this? I assume we're gonna be waiting to also hear the concerns and interests of the other two parties that would probably be involved in this agreement. Have these discussions already met the, before the city council in Champaign or the...
So, there's been one, there's been one study session at the city council in Champaign. I think that was a month and a half ago or so. They raised similar concerns, and then, you know, we, we met and, you know, moved the, the IGA along further. They're gonna meet, I think, within the next week to do a, a second round of study session, and they're, so they're, they're trying to track closely with, with Urbana and with, with the university. I bet Lily can probably explain the university's process better than I can. But we're all trying, we're all targeting May as, as when things would need to be adopted and put in place.
Okay. And then the other thing I would maybe just make a comment on is it would be smart, I think, to set up some kind of guidelines for parking the bikes. Yeah, I assume that any public parkway is an acceptable place to leave these, because that's not private land. It's, the space between the sidewalk and the street is parkway. So, if you're in a residential area, where on the block is it best to try to accumulate these parked bikes? Do we wanna try to limit them to near the corners? Or not near the corners, because sometimes the corner is where the bus will stop?
Mm-hmm.
You don't want them right at the bus stop. You don't wanna burden the person who has a corner home with being the person who always has the bike in their front yard. Even though it's not in their yard, it's in their parkway in front of their house. And it could be there for three days, five days, until somebody else chooses to find it and to use it again. So, these are, especially, I mean, if, if somebody on your block, mayor, wanted to use it, where would it be appropriate on the street to leave it? I guess it would have to be at, in front of their apartment or in front of their own property. I guess that'd be the only thing that one could do.
And, and those are, or that's a, a good question. And I think that's, you know, that's something we'd need to tackle separately. As I mentioned, the IGA says that parking regulations can be, or will be adopted by each of the entities. So, I think that's a separate, separate conversations that we can have, but certainly concurrent conversations that, that I think would be appropriate to, to have.
Okay, great, thanks.
Eric.
So, it would be helpful, I'm trying quickly to browse, but it would be helpful, it's clear from, that in some places it works well, and in some places it hasn't. So, I am guessing that in constructing this agreement, that you're cognizant, you know, that you are taking into account the, the things that make some things, some areas, some ventures successful and others not. It would really be helpful to annotate for our consideration, you know, point us toward materials that, that, you know, online, that you think are, you know, especially enlightening with respect to both the promises and the pitfalls.
All right. I just had a few, couple of questions slash comments. I'm curious, you know, as, as I thought about this, I think one of my top concerns was, where are people gonna be leaving these bikes? But as I thought, and, and based on the conversation, I was thinking to myself, really, it's not that much different from a car rental agency. Car rental agency doesn't dictate where you're gonna park it, the laws of that community dictate where you're allowed to park it. I, with that in mind, I do think that the timeframe in terms of the three hours and the twelve hours, I think that there needs to be kind of a, a red alert, shall we say, for areas that are a public hazard. So, for example, if we're blocking handicap ramps, if it is laying in the middle of the street, I, I don't know. I mean, I, we could probably come up with a list of kind of, these are more urgent requests. I think that that would be helpful and maybe mitigate some of these issues. And then I guess my last question would be about South Bend right now, I'm not sure how big their university is. Is there an equivalent in terms of a community that's adopted this type of program with the large university? There is. Lily shaking her head, yes. Lots of them.
Yeah, I'm sure she, she probably knows.
One of the last few one schools not to have a dockless bike share system operating in our campus right now.
I'm gonna come up and talk.
Yeah, sorry. So, I work at the university, and I, not to sound, but a lot of these, these places are really looking at the university and the university community and seeing forty-five-thousand students, and they're saying, all right, you know, this, these business models are only something that can operate on scale. So, five hundred bikes might seem like a lot to us, but it's actually gonna be quite a restriction. We've got a lot of pushback from the companies, but we hear your concerns, and we're really trying to make sure that this is something that, is something that we can manage as a community, or we don't have to manage. The companies will be able to manage it within our kind of community and, and what we're doing. Recognize that this is a pilot program, and so there are some schools that are doing this right now, like Texas A&amp;M is a huge school, much larger than ours. Michigan has one too as well. And so, these are, these are large schools that have dockless, and they also have docked bike share too as well, operating. And just so we're clear, last time the community got really close to having a docked bike share, it was a million dollars for only a hundred bikes in ten stations, and I will tell you that those ten bikes were not gonna go in a lot of neighborhoods. They were just gonna basically go, I mean, we couldn't afford a million dollars, and we definitely couldn't afford to sprinkle them everywhere equally. And if you even saw that Divvy map, there was a lot of neighborhoods that didn't have any bikes whatsoever. So, you can imagine what would happen to a lot of our low-income neighborhoods where people really do need bikes. So, this is actually gonna be something that, also as an Urbana resident, it's gonna be fairly equitable form of transportation. But there are big schools that are operating them, and compliance is up. Seattle's now operating at about a ninety-nine, ninety-five percent parking compliance. This is something that we look at, because what you might think of your cost to an officer in hourly rate, it's just like that on the campus. And we will have fees in place, but we're not expecting to really use them and charge the company that. We're expecting for the operators to be able to respond in three hours. I will tell you that the three hours has been probably the biggest compromise we've had to do for that length of time. A lot of companies said there's, it's really hard for them to respond faster than that. And like I said, this is a, a thing that, you know, I wish that Uber and Lyft would have talked to us before they started operating in our towns. We at least have the opportunity to set up some of these rules. And really fast to talk about some of the communities where this has been awful, like Dallas and Australia. We also had a little, a couple of those comments in Champaign where some people were like, this is the free market, we don't need any regulations, just let the companies come in. And I'm, I'll tell you that I'm really proud of where we are with the IGA and what we've done in the research. I'm coming up on a one-year anniversary of working on this. So, you know, we can write a book about why we've chosen things and what we're doing, but I'm, I'm very proud of this. And if you're, we don't know what will happen in Urbana, but we do know that we should try it. A lot of the pictures you see out of Seattle will also be people that you don't usually see riding a bicycle, riding a bicycle. So, and that's what we've been trying to do in the city of Urbana, and also in campus.
All right, did you wanna add anything? You have a, a public comment card here.
I do. Well, my biggest comment is that Divvy wasn't terribly equitable, and it wasn't divided up across the whole city. And we have a town running on a, a small, you know, budget, and we would like to be able to offer, you know, bicycles to people who wanna really use them for affordable price. Most companies have approached us at the university with fifty cents for an hour. It's pretty good.
That's good, that's good.
Dean.
Sorry for chugging in so late. Did I understand you correctly that you feel that this will help people who couldn't normally do this get a bicycle, because you said it was equitable or more accessible?
Yeah, it's very affordable. It's also too, if you've had a bicycle, you were able to save up the money to get one. You might've had it stolen or damaged by the weather, or maybe the bicycle was a cheap one from Walmart or Kmart or something. It was disposable, it broke on you within a year, or within thirty rides. These are all things that I hear on a regular basis of why someone doesn't wanna ride a bike. So, these are things that we wouldn't have to worry about with these bikes and these future bike riders.
I'm, I'm sitting here thinking that if you have to have a smartphone and a credit card to get one, you're probably not a low-income person.
So, there's a lot of companies that are looking into ways of doing it with a prepaid card or being, so basically a cash system and being able to do it safely. That is something that with this pilot program, we can't address right now, because we'd be asking them to think of a technology that that would be untested and not something that, that I would feel comfortable asking a business owner and convincing them to come to our community to use something like that that's so experimental, but it is a pilot program. And so, if there's something out there, we can add that to when the contract renewal comes up. Notice that there is no renewals for these contracts. It is, they will all end whether you applied for one, you know, tomorrow, or whether you applied for one in the middle of August, they will all end on the same date. So, we can look at those.
The last comment I'll make is, I, I think part of what bothers me with this is that it's helicopter management. Nobody that owns these or anywhere even remotely close to our community, is there a way that we could try to get some local owners to do this, if you're gonna do it?
Yes, absolutely. So, all of these, we're not, we really can't have a company, you know, promise that their physical address is in town, but we can't, we do, all of them will have to have someone who can, in town who can respond within three hours. So, there are people here who are gonna be operating this. Also recognize, too, that there are actually some Midwestern companies that are doing this. One company that, the first one to contact the university for operation was Vioride, and they're actually a group of students out of Purdue. So, we do have some people who are actually, universities are near and dear to them, and also the Midwest, they're in the Midwest. West Lafayette is really not that far. They've already shot a couple of safety videos in our town.
You'll have operators that are local that are being paid. I, I get that. I was just think, suggesting that what if we encouraged somebody to start up these businesses locally, because then they have an investment in their own community, and they're gonna be more accountable for this shared resource?
Kinda like Uber and Lyft, we don't really have the luxury of being able to do that. You know, Uber is very successful, because they have billions of dollars of venture capital behind them from all over the world. And that's a lot like dockless bike share, where there's a lot of venture capital. And so, if someone in the community can come up with that kind of money for the upfront costs and venture capital, that's awesome. But currently, we don't have anybody who's willing to run that bill. Last time the university, the community has paid something for dockless bike share, it was a feasibility study, it was twenty-five thousand dollars split up between four agencies. This has been costing us small amounts of money forever, and we haven't gotten anywhere with that bike share yet.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
That's an Urbana thing. Thank you, no, thank you.
All right, let's move on with public input. Cynthia Hoyle, would you like to address the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I'm a transportation planner. I consult with the Transit District. And the Transit District has been, as Kevin said, we've been talking about having bike sharing now for at least eight years. And the capital investment has always been an impediment. And, and I would also like to say, we already have problems with junk bikes and illegal bike parking in the community. Sort of the model that we see a lot of here is people come into the community, they either buy a used bike, which there isn't regulatory authority over, and I often see people here from other countries that they have purchased a used bike, which is in horrifically bad mechanical condition. It really sometimes should not even be ridden, and, or they go to a big box and buy a bike. And those bikes are often disposed of, they're parked illegally, et cetera. So, to, to some extent, having these bikes within a system that someone is responsible for may help us with management of bikes. That said, the Transit District has concerns about bike parking, and in particular, because we see this as an extension of mobility services, people getting to and from bus stops and to Illinois Terminal. And so, there, there are regularly bikes parked illegally at Illinois Terminal that are cut off and put into a storage room. They try to contact the owners. And so, there is concern about the ones that will not be chained to anything, where they're gonna end up and impede operations. So, my intern and I had drawn up a document early on in this discussion, in which we had made some recommendations for things that we thought should be done. And one of those was to address parking a little more rigorously, and as Kevin said, you all would be developing parking regulations by community. So, there are two things that we can do there. One is to have parking management mechanisms that we establish with the vendors, so that there's some sort of maybe credit or demerit system for having bikes that other people have to remove in order, you know, for example, they're on the bus stop, they're in the, you know, front of the bus path, et cetera. So, someone's gonna have to move those, and, and so have some sort of system whereby that, that is accounted for and, and dealt with. And having requirements for safe places that bikes can be parked, I was in Amsterdam last summer, and the system that they've used, which I think we could use here, is that they paint rectangular boxes on to the ground, paved surfaces where, that's where you're supposed to be parking the bikes. And you're not supposed to be parking them in other locations outside of that. So, it's something that we could look at particularly in congested areas like Illinois Terminal, the downtowns, and on campus. I, I think that the dockless bike share has the potential to help us with some of our, our bike clutter problems, but we have to have that, that set up with the vendors. And, and the response time, I, I guess I'm surprised they pushed back on the two hours, because I know some of the other bigger cities have done that, but I guess bigger cities have bigger systems, and maybe they can throw their weight around a little bit more. Two hours seems reasonable to me, but we could live with three, unless, of course, I think you could have a provision in there that if a bike is left in a location that is creating a safety issue, it will be removed promptly, and some system where there's a, you know, demerit system if that's happening a lot with a vendor. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'm ticking down to nothing.
Can you respond to the university, one of the things?
Sure.
Could you, can you come up, please?
Yeah, sorry. We are gonna, so I, I would never wanna advise you guys on your parking policies, but at the university, we'll be having marketed.
Well, I think we need them, too.
Parking areas for dockless bikes. So, just to let you know, that's what we're, our plan is to, and we have so, we, a lot of those abandoned bikes and bike problems are on our campus. So, this is gonna be, we see this as very helpful.
And with our wayfinding plan that we're working on, maybe one of the things we ought to consider is to make sure that people know their way to bike parking, because Urbana has a lot of bike parking, but it may not be obvious to people. And so, that, that may, might be helpful, too.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much. Leo Kovis, is that correct?
Hello. I'm Leo Kovis. I'm a board member of Champaign County Bikes. I'm also on BPAC. So I have one suggestion and just one kind of general question about this. A suggestion I have for this type of project is to have a way for people to provide their more general feedback on how they feel this is going. So right now, you know, as it's proposed, you could call if somebody parked their bike in your driveway or something. But I'd like a way for people to say, you know, this is the best thing that's ever happened to Urbana or people keep parking their bikes in my driveway and do something about that. So a general feedback mechanism apart from going to city council or whatever that may be, since that's not always reasonable for everybody. And then another, a question I have was addressed a little bit by Cynthia, but just how will people know where they're allowed to bike, to park a bike? Can you park on the sidewalk in front of your friend's house? If we're painting spots in downtown where people are going to be able to park these bikes, who's paying for that paint? Just one other thing to, to think about when we're talking about this. That's all from me.
Thank you. Bill, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Leo. I, I understand you're doing a presentation at Champaign Public Library Wednesday night. Could you do like a 20-second commercial on that?
Yeah, sure. April 18th, so next week, Champaign Public Library. I did a research project as part of something called Project Drawdown, which calculated the effects of increased bicycle riding around the world over the next 30 years. If that were to increase by a certain amount, how much greenhouse gas reductions we could expect around the world and the effect on climate change, as well as the potential financial savings to cities and municipalities that institute more bicycle infrastructure in their communities. So April 18th, 7:00 PM at Champaign Public Library.
Thank you. Oh, Mayor Marlin?
Well, I'll take a moment to advertise something else. We do have a, a mechanism for people to voice, provide input to the city now. It's called Citizens Voice and we'll take complaints or compliments on this site. So that's on the city's website.
Cool. Thank you.
And the last person, Jeff Yocle? Jeff Yocle, thank you.
Thank you very much. Live on Washington Street. Great questions, everybody. I want to let you know, oh, I'm with Champaign County Bikes. And I want to let you know that the, the bike folks are super behind the regulations, the intergovernmental agreement. We're also behind like giving bicycle riders tickets when they do bad things. We want to cultivate good behavior and the bike safety quiz and the, the way that you can redeem, redeem that and learn how to work, it's great. We want more of that. We're in favor. I think when Lily first said she had her first meeting, Cynthia and I, you know, we had already started collecting these agreements from cities that were responding over a year ago. And, and the, there's four or five associations and they were collecting the data and making best recommendations and best practices. So we want all those things here. I think one of the things that's, and I was in charge of a couple of Illinois Bike Summits. And we put this topic on our agenda because people want it. They're coming from Chicago. We want bike share here. But you have to have a big bank underwrite those big systems. And they were working all within the loop. A big banker, a big donor, or somebody that's going to use it for marketing purposes to put that kind of money in, to make it work and to have all the manpower, just wasn't going to work in the size of a community. So this is the evolution. They're talking about bike share 3.0. And it's probably going to go to 5.0 before it all gets refined. But it's now with the GPS technology and a number of things, it's starting to work. And so we're going to, we're going to figure that out. I was thinking about when I, when the, when the internet and the email system was in the Wild, Wild West days, I think my first email was jeffyaki@sprinet. And then about six months later, that got bought and was jeffyaki@minespring. And then it became jeffyaki@earthlink before I finally said, I'm going to pay 100 bucks to keep my email forever at mac.com. And now I don't have to pay anything and I'm jeffyaki@gmail forever. Anybody listening that's sending me an email, I welcome your thoughts on bike share. This is going to happen. And right now, if all of us, if some of us decide we want a pizza, you know, after this meeting is over, somehow the grocery store is going to have enough pizzas for those of us who want one to buy one and take it home. But how do they figure that out, right? And, and why aren't pizzas going all through the aisle and around the corner, you know? Because somehow the market works. And I don't know what the number of bicycles Champaign or Urbana will require, but in about three years, we'll hit it. And some of these companies won't be around. And some of them will have figured it out and made it work and they will be. So we don't know right away, but, and we'll probably get more than we need at first, but it'll get refined into a usable model. I think Bill made the comment you were asking about bikes in wrong places. That will happen. We'll have to learn and develop a culture. The bike boxes are a great idea. But these bikes on the whole lock to themselves. And so they are things that you can move and get out of the way very easily. I was in Washington DC. That one picture that Kevin had up there showed bikes parking on grates. I know that more than one time, somebody jogged a bike or something moved, a kickstand went through a grate. I picked one or two up, you know. I think I saw other people doing that. So it's a good thing. We're trying to sort it out. Maybe the kickstands need bigger, bigger bases on them, but it's all going to get sorted out. One of the economic things is that some of these bikes are, can be built at $40 a bike. They do, like Kevin said, have very proprietary parts. They're not going to get parted out. $40 a bike, just do the math. You can get a bike here and maintain it. Maybe you have 100 bucks in it for the life of a bike, which may be a year. Can you get enough rides to get your 100 bucks back? Yeah, that's the model. That's why it's beginning to work. You know, the big dock bike shares, the divvies and stuff, are not going to put bikes at Ivanhoe. But you know what? These things could end up at Ivanhoe. And then they could go down to the restaurant districts or wherever people are working or to the schools and say, hey, that works. And if that works, maybe we need a few more bikes. The equity issue is a big thing. If you put your mind in the mindset of a, a parent from Chicago whose daughter is coming down or his son is coming down to the U of I and they're thinking about bringing their bike, you know, and they get it on a bike rack and drive it from Chicago and leave it here and, and that, you know, I got a flat tire. What do I do? How do I leave it out all winter? All those kinds of things. And you say, wow, 50 cents and you can ride it for half an hour. You can get from one side of the quad to the other. You can get from the quad to downtown Champaign. You, you're not going to go through 100 bucks at $50 an hour for a lot of people. That's a lot better than taking a bike. So I think it's going to work for lots of people. Our students are coming from Chicago. They've seen bike shares. People from here are going to conferences. They're seeing bike shares in those cities. Bike share is going crazy in China. And if you look at the Time Magazine, it came out on Saturday, five-page article about what's going on. So people around the world are getting that. They're coming here. They're going to actually know how it works. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, staff report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to start off with some news on single-family housing development. So we look at housing construction and we look at square feet added. And they are significantly up year-to-date from the last three years. And this is due to actually six new homes that are being built on spec in Stone Creek. And there's actually more expected to come out in the next report. They just didn't make the data cutoff. As well as one large-scale, single-family home that's planned. As far as commercial development goes, I'll start north and work my way down. So Domino's Pizza has started construction on their new $750,000 building at 407 East University. So that's at the Five Points intersection. Crispy Crunchy Chicken, which is a national chain, will co-locate at Courtesy Cleaning at 402. And they're still in the planning process for that project. Best of Africa has submitted plans to complete an expansion. And that's going to be for a catering business, sit-down restaurant and special event performance, largely catering to the local Congolese population. Casa Del Mar, a Mexican restaurant, will locate in the former Milo's restaurant space. There, those owners operate multiple other successful Mexican restaurants. Looking at Think Urbana Marketing. We hosted the Second Annual Home Builders Breakfast on March 20th. We had 10 Realtor, home builder and prospective homeowner attendees. We had some great attendees, questions as well from that. We also do have a new Facebook page, which we're trying to build up at the moment. Moving on to upcoming events, this is actually a very busy week. This 14th is, sorry, this weekend, Saturday, the 14th, is Urbana Celebrates the Boneyard. It's a family-friendly event. It's going to be bigger than ever. The weather location is going to be at Lincoln Square Mall. Otherwise, it will be out at Boneyard Creek Crossing. April 16th, we have the 200 South Fine RFP responses due. We have received, sorry, interest from multiple developers on that as well. 19th will be our first Urbana Realtor Tour. And that's going to be for highlighting Urbana's ages, amenities for all ages. And that is a Think Urbana marketing program as well. You can find information on that on our new Facebook page. And then on the 24th will be the Urbana Business Association Connections Over Coffee. Also on the 24th will be the first food truck rally. And then on the 26th will be the sneak peek for the Urbana Arts Grants. I did want to make one correction. I apologize. On page four, the Chateau Normand was 1.6 million, not 16 million. Any questions?
Jared?
Hey, Libby.
Hi.
So I just had a general question. Something just popped into my mind. So I, every time we get one of these business reports, you know, it's always a, I want to say positively termed, but I never hear about when a business closes, usually we never hear about, you know, when bad things were happening. And I feel like it leaves us maybe with a, an unrealistic or maybe a little less than, or an idealistic interpretation of what the current situation is of business and economic development in our, in our town. And I'm just curious why we never hear about closings or why we never hear about the negative side of owning businesses and small businesses in Urbana.
Yes. Yes, I will start putting those back in. We actually draw mostly from building permits. So that's where a lot of those data goes. So that's an error on my part and I will start putting those back in.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Oh, Dennis, you have a question?
Okay, so just because you mentioned the, the Boneyard Arts Festival, which is coming to our community this coming weekend.
Yes.
I just wanted to add an item that's going to be taking place at the Cohen Building on Saturday at 2 o'clock. And this is the dedication of a new W, let's see, Joseph W. Royer Arts and Architecture District plaque. It's commemorating the Cohen Building and Nate Cohen, the owner of that and who owned a nice cigar factory and was also a great musician here in the community.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Libby. Any other staff reports this evening? No? All right. Moving on. Ordinance number 2018-04029. An ordinance approving an amendment to the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium. Fiscal year 2015, 2019 Consolidated Plan, Community Development.
Good evening. So the issue before council is whether to approve the proposed amendment to the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Fiscal Year 15, 2015, 2019 Consolidated Plan, which includes changes to sections that are related to the Citizen Participation Plan process and updates to the Geographic Priorities section of the plan. In May of 2015, City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium submitted its five-year consolidated plan, or CON, plan to HUD. And it's required, and it provides five-year goals and strategies for the use of our Community Development Block grant and our home funds, which is received from HUD annually. Through the consolidated plan, the city is participating in the CDBG program is required to develop and follow a detailed citizen participation plan, which provides for and encourages citizen participation, particularly those with low, low and moderate income persons. So we recognized that we needed to update our citizen participation plan in the CON, in the CON plan to include specific public input steps. And this amendment would accomplish this task. And then the geographic priorities section, it modifies the existing section that describes the target area to reflect the changes discussed and approved by council in February through the resolution as noted in the memo. At its March 27th, 2018, regular meeting, the Community Development Commission reviewed the proposed amendment and voted unanimously to recommend council approval. And so staff in the Community Development Commission recommend that the committee as a whole forward the resolution to the Urbana City Council with a recommendation for approval. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, Bill?
So I've been to a couple of the meetings, the community meetings, when you've had them for public input. And they're not real well-attended, but it does, I, I think a lot of people just don't read the legal ads in the newspaper and look at our website every week, you know, to see if there's a meeting coming up. But I, I'm, I think the neighborhood news is a great way to advertise them. I, I don't get it because I'm not in a target census block area, but I do see it sometimes. So I don't, you said that Champaign doesn't have that, so I don't know how people know about there. But I guess that's not our problem. But if there's any other ways to, to get it out to people that there, there are these meetings? Plus, when, when they do hear about them, it's usually this big document called the, the five-year plan. And, you know, it's a 300-page document with lots of goals and objectives. But what we, what they really are looking for, I think, is one or two pages saying, this is how we're going, how we could spend money in your neighborhood. We want your input on, you know, what you think your, what your priorities might be. Maybe, you know, just a simplified version. And maybe it does say that in the neighborhood news. I don't remember exactly how it's presented. But I think getting more people to some of those meetings would be useful. I did have one question about the map. I know we looked at it before, but it just occurred to me. There's one census block group, 553, which is mostly the Champaign County campus area. You know, the nursing home, the Brookins, all that. But we do have a few residences along Dodson Drive that have annexed to the city. And then that Sunny Lane, there's about 30 pretty new houses along there. So it doesn't seem like we're likely to, to spend much money there, but maybe eventually. My, my question is if we do annex other properties in that Dodson area, mostly because they connect to sewers, I think is why we annex them there? Do they automatically become part of that area when they're annexed?
Yeah, I believe so.
Or do we have to pass something again? It's everything within that census tract probably. We just automatically get?
Right. Because the shaded areas show that at least 51% of the residents in that census are low and moderate.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Aaron?
Oh, how, how fine-grained is, is that? Is this at the level of the census blocks or is it the larger level of the census tracts?
Some are, down to the block, particularly on the southern part down there, yes. In the, in previous maps as well, it was also down to the block. So it may not be the whole census tract, but only certain blocks.
Which, which I guess makes more sense.
Aaron?
So, thanks Kelly for this. Can you explain just a little bit clearer, what exactly are you looking? When you say detailed citizen participa, citizen participation, what are you looking for from the citizens in particular?
Well, what it does, it just defines more for us, the process in setting up the public hearings. Also, in particular, we have, when we have a substantial amendment versus a non-substantial amendment, that wasn't really clearly defined. Part of the problem is that the system that we use to submit to HUD has pre-populated questions and not necessarily enough room to add a lot of information. So this addresses things that were not originally in the consolidated plan.
So I thought I understood that to mean, when I read through it, was that it was, this was designed for the department to, under citizen participation. But I'm trying to understand, is there a way for, is there something that we solicit from maybe through what Bill was talking about? The actual, any sort of interaction between the citizens in these census tracts with the department to say, this is what we want to have happen?
Right. That's why we try, yes, through the news- Right, that's why we try, yes, through the newspaper, through the city website, we try to send to neighborhood groups. I have some email addresses for some of the neighborhood groups. We probably need to expand and add more to make sure that we get ahold of people through that, through the email process, too.
And do we, do we have a list of, like, let's say, for instance, it's UCAP for, in my ward, would there be a list of all the things that CDBG money can be used for to improve a particular area that we could provide to them as well?
Yes, and when we do have our meetings, we always take our, our plan and our annual action plan, and we do let citizens that come, let them know what we have spent on for projects in the area, and we would certainly continue to do that if someone showed up.
So, okay, I understand that. I was just trying to make sure that as simple as possible of what can, what we can, what a citizen can ask for in their area, for their particular, I don't even know all the things that CDBG funds can be used for, so I'm just logically concluding that many of the residents don't know either, right? So, if there's a way to just list that, these are all the things that could be done, and just trying to help promote it from that standpoint in as simple terms as possible.
Sure.
That's all. Thank you.
Jared?
So, going off of that thought, Kelly, is there CDBG funds that are specifically set aside for marketing, if you will, to these folks? I mean, a mailer might be good, you know, something that gets directly into the hands of those people, and their mailboxes at home, flyers, et cetera, I mean, there's a lot of other, you know, hoping people end up with a newspaper in their hand is far different than putting something in their mailbox. Just a thought. Are those, are there funds available to do those kinds of things?
It would be part of our administration, so we do have, like, publication, postage, those things. In fact, we are working on sending out a newsletter by the 20th of this month, because we are having a neighborhood cleanup, and so, we are, and it actually talks about the new target area, because there are some new residents that are going to be receiving this newsletter, so that's one thing, yes, that we do.
So, just to, not just leave that hanging in the wind for you, I said that with the intention of, I know a lot of graphic designers in this town, and a lot of people who do not-for-profit work, and might consider this to be a not-for-profit work, to help put something like that together, if the city did not have staff or resources to, you know, maybe accurately create materials that might be easily understood, and easily readable, and easily accessible visually and conceptually to people about these kinds of programs, just because even all of us who have been here and hearing about it and learning about it for as long as we have, I think still have a hard time sometimes wrapping our heads around what all it goes down into, so.
We do have a.
Please, reach out to me if.
Sure.
If you would like some contact information for folks who might be interested in helping out, putting stuff together, take some ease off the city staff.
We also, we do have a brochure that we put together that talks about our housing rehab programs, and in fact, I think at the Disability Expo, that was up at Vineyard Church, we had some of those flyers, so that people were aware of some of our programs.
Anyway, just something, something to consider, alternative ways to get information to folks.
Dennis?
Having worked with the request and the reception of CDPG funding for some parts of my own ward, East Urbana, and also of the Lurman neighborhood, I understand mostly the kinds of projects that come forward are based on Public Works and staff working together to identify problem issues, and sometimes this is in response to citizen complaints. I'm thinking specifically of a streetlight on a corner which illuminates an area that's been dark and now is considered more safe because there's a streetlight, but these projects always involve physical utility sorts of improvements, as opposed to public service or mental health services. These are all for physical improvements in the community, hard, you know, concrete and post kind of solutions. And often, there is vetting in the community, or the neighborhood, which, where the improvement is easily requested or suggested, and I know that the outreach usually happens then when a project is either initiated or offered, or being responded to by a complaint.
Aaron?
So, the blighted properties and things like that are, fall into the category?
Yes, but we actually have used other funds, like the Blight Reduction Program and the Abandoned Property Program that we receive funds from the state for those types of properties.
So, one of the reasons why it's coming up even more, after just reading through it, but I did get an email from a constituent asking about some blighted areas on Curran Division, and having concerns about lots of littering, one property has been vacant for over a year, those types of things, and so, that's why I want to try to, some of these things, of course, I can see it when I read it in the packet, but the people at home who have the concerns don't even think, don't have any idea what a CDPG is, and how they could access that, who to call, so, ma'am, if you're watching, call Kelly Mirkowski, and she will be able to help you with that, and if not, Bill Gray, Public Works, but it's, these are some of the concerns that come in, and it's helpful to know where to go, who to call for them, so, thank you.
Diane?
Actually, you want to call Jason Aerosmith, who's out this week, but he handles nuisance properties, so issues of overgrown yards, or junk in a yard, or that sort of thing, you'd call Jason, or email.
Bill?
I move to send ordinance number 2018-04-029 to City Council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That moves forward. I think, Kelly, you're up for the next one as well?
Actually, Matt's up for the next one, then I am the one after that.
Okay, all right. So, next up on the agenda is Resolution Number 2018-04-13R, a resolution approving certain home investment partnership program, loan documents between the City of Urbana and Bristol Place, Bristol Place Residences LP.
And the resolution is pretty self-explanatory in that regard. These would be loan documents for the Home Investment Partnerships Program, which is a federal funding source that the City of Urbana receives on behalf of the Home Consortium on an annual basis. And I do want to take a step back and just take a moment to clarify why we're discussing loan documents and funding for an affordable, affordable housing development in the City of Champagne, and the reason for that is that the City of Urbana is the lead entity of the Urbana Home Consortium, which is made up of the City of Urbana, as well as the City of Champagne, and unincorporated parts of Champagne County. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has designated the City of Urbana to oversee home funds used in any of those three jurisdictions. So, with that in mind, it is our responsibility to either directly administer these funds, as we're planning to do through this resolution, or work with the City of Champagne to train their staff and oversee their use of these funds, but given the circumstances and recent direction from HUD, we've determined that it would be, it would be better to oversee the subsidy to the Bristol Place development directly, rather than through a subrecipient relationship with the City of Champagne. So, moving on to the actual development itself, it is a 90-unit mixed-income rental development in the Bristol Park neighborhood of Champagne. It was recently awarded low-income housing tax credits through the Illinois Housing Development Authority. These are the same tax credits that the Aspen Court neighborhood in Urbana has received that helped that rehabilitation activity to move on. They really form the key element of any affordable housing financing, but there are, there is a need for additional financing to fill the gap there, and that's where the developer contacted the Urbana Home Consortium for additional funds, in this case, from the Home Investment Partnerships Program, in the amount of $415,452, all of which coming from the City of Champagne's allocation of home funds within the consortium, meaning that these funds would have been used in Champagne regardless, and they're usually used for homeowner, homeowner rehab, but due to the pressing need of this development, the City of Champagne has voiced their preference that these funds be used for the Bristol Park development. And as you can also see in the memo, this is a very complex financing scheme. There are seven other partners in the development as well, ranging from the City of Champagne, the Housing Authority of Champagne County, to large for-profit banks as well. The developer's budget is relatively tight, so these funds would make a big difference in making this project, in making this project work financially. The home loan documents that are mentioned in the resolution are primarily, they primarily consist of the Rental Housing Developer Agreement, which is the agreement that we execute with the developer to make sure that they extend the federal restrictions that are required through these funds to the actual development itself, and also the land use restriction agreement that we record onto the property, and the mortgage and promissory note, which secures the City of Urbana's interest in the property as well. And these, the redevelopment activities here have been talked about in the consolidated plan that Kelly had mentioned earlier, as well as a wide variety of City of Champagne planning documents. Recent amendments to the annual action plans were approved by the City Council through resolutions 2017-1278R and 2017-1279R. So, the options before the Committee of the Whole are the usual options, but we also, we would like to pass along some information that we learned last Friday. Assistant City Attorney Kurt Borman and I were on a conference call with the development team, and the other development partners, the seven other entities, the housing authority, the banks, they expressed a desire to review our documents as well, the document, the draft documents that we had, that I have included in the packet. In the past, we usually just work directly with the developer, we get legal comments from them, run them through our own legal division, and that's the end of it, but in this case, the other development partners have expressed a willingness to include comments on our, on our legal documents. So, with that in mind, we would ask the Committee of the Whole to either forward this resolution to the April 23 Committee of the Whole, where I can provide updated documents and possibly even subordination agreements, if other lenders find those necessary, or if the Committee of the Whole would wish to just see the final documents at the next, or at the, the City Council meeting following the April 23 meeting, which would be on May 7, the Committee of the Whole could forward directly to that meeting as well. It's the preference of the body. In terms of fiscal impacts, I do want to emphasize that this involves no city general funds, and the funds included here are home funds that would have otherwise been used in the City of Champagne, and no impacts to the City of Urbana would be made as a result of this funding. And also, this item was brought before the Community Development Commission in its May 27 meeting, and that body voted unanimously to forward it to the City Council with recommendation for approval. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Eric?
So, there are anti-discrimination clauses, that's my wife, there are anti-discrimination clauses here, and they say race, gender, ethnicity, religion, disability, but they do not include prior convictions, which is an area of nondiscrimination that, that we as a city are, are interested in. Was that omission and oversight, or was that a decision?
The language that's used in those phrases comes from the federal regulations, so the protected classes there are the ones that are mentioned in federal regulations, because that's where the money comes from. We can discuss with the legal teams and the development, the developers and the other development team members about other classes that we could include in there and should include in there, but yeah, that was, that's the reason that prior convictions were not mentioned there. And I do also want to add, the Neighborhood Programs Manager from the City of Champagne, Janelle Gomez, is here as well, and she's able to answer questions on behalf of the city, too.
Okay, well, yeah, I, and I know other people up here would appreciate your looking into that particular class.
Will do, absolutely.
Aaron?
So, a couple of things, Matt, the, and Janelle, I'd be happy if you want to come on up and you want to answer some of them, that would be great. So, I'm just curious as to, is this, for lack of a better term, just a pass-through for us, we're just simply giving up money because we're the lead, we, we don't really, we're not supposed to ask any questions, we're just supposed to give the money, is that how that's supposed to work?
We value your input.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, great, now it's open.
So, we, we had, you know, we had questions at the Community Development Commission, and I take that back to our body and say, hey, that was a really great question, maybe we need to bring it up when we talk to the City of Champagne, specifically Krista Ann asked about the cost of affordable housing per unit, which you said, yeah, you know, that is a question we need to answer publicly to all. So, the arrangement is unique, as Urbana being the administrative body of the home funds, but we bring this here because we do value your input.
And I figured there had to be some sort of responsibility, maybe even liability on our part, if we don't do our due diligence and ask some particular questions or something like that, so I certainly echo Eric's comments, and is there a federal regulation that stops you from having that protected class in this, and for this particular project?
There's no federal requirement that would prohibit us from adding, you know, other protected classes, no.
Does the City of Champagne have a human rights or human relations clause that supports and protects people with felony convictions?
I believe so. I am not the authority there, or that is, we have an office, and I will confer with them to make sure that we have the correct language in the agreements.
So, one of the things that was mentioned earlier was that this is a affordable housing, but it's also saying it's a mixed unit. I'm a little confused by that, what that, what does that mean?
That's federal language, or anytime, the way that public housing used to work was 100% of every unit had to go to people that were low-income or very low-income. This unit, the majority of the units, I believe, around 80, will go to people who are at or below 80% of the median income, or 50% of the median income, or 30% of the median income, but there are, will be 10 units that will be available for the developer to issue at market rate rents.
Okay, and Matt, you mentioned about the phone calls that was different, it's not what typically happens. What, either one of you, can you help us understand what was going on there, why, why are these concerns, why is it so tight, the budgeting, and the, why are other folks interested in the legalese of this?
It's always tight, that's not an issue. The developer has facilitated a really open process. Every document for every partner is available in a box for all of us to view, and it wasn't like, they did something weird, it was like, we offered it up, does anyone else want to take a look at these agreements, and they said, sure, we do underwriting as well, we'll, you know, we'll take a look at those as well. It wasn't, you know, something that they're putting on us, you know, onerously, that we wouldn't have expected.
Do it.
Yeah, I can contrast that with the Highland Green Development, when we worked with Brinshaw Development on that project, we worked directly with the developer. There were other funding bodies there, but they, Brinshaw Development reviewed our documents, and that was it. So, that's really the difference that I drew the comparison to there. This is just a different process with different values put on openness to reviewing the documents, and that's really the only difference.
Is it, is it typical for a project to be really dependent upon the Home Consortium being able to give money like this, this $425,000, to make the project work?
Yes, I think the, the role of home funds has changed over the years, there's less and less of that money, but I think the developer runs a really, really tight budget, and the amount he's able to, to borrow from the different parties, and they're all, they're not all major banks, there's IFF and Affordable Housing Trust, and, and at this point, every dollar counts into making our vision, you know, happen. I mean, there's. I mean, there's things that we want there that maybe just a purely for-profit developer wouldn't put, you know, but we're asking them to abide by some standards that make this, you know, a neighborhood and not just, you know, some affordable housing development. So you'll find most affordable housing developments are extremely creative, and this is often a source of funds in filling up the gap that is needed.
And lastly for me, the consortium, do, does that entity, the, the bodies that make up the consortium have the autonomy or the authority to apply, like, participation goals to it, is that only can come from the cities?
Participation goals, meaning...
Like minority participation goals for projects?
Um, I get, I mean, there's no, there's no, well, there's federal...
The, the Section 3 guidelines are triggered, yeah, that's a, a federal, it sets goals for minority and women participation, in particular, low-income participation projects and the awarding of contracts. But the regulations are kind of loose with regards to Section 3. We recently adopted a Section 3 plan that makes them a little bit more clear and a little bit more straightforward, and the developer has actually hired a Section 3 consultant to try to expand involvement of low-income minority contractors on the project, and breaking down different, different, of the, different subcontracts to enable smaller-scale contractors...
Split goals and things like that?
Yes, yeah, so that it's not just a large contractors that come in and get them, but somebody who's building up their operation can come in and get a smaller chunk of the development.
All right, thank you.
Wow. I think Jared had his hand up way before.
All right. So just had a question about development itself. Ninety units, huh? Twenty-three million-dollar project.
Correct.
And this is to take place just north of Bradley Avenue, near the train tracks and the Big JJ Fish and Chicken Place.
Correct.
And how, I mean, so what's the, what's the plan with displacement for all the people who live in homes in that area currently?
It is empty, there are no homes there. Because before, before we started the project, we established a, an acquisition, relocation, and demolition process for all the homes that we acquired. We, there were 90 buildings, there were 50 families that were relocated from the area before we purchased the properties. And I believe 46 of them were relocated locally, and they were relocated using federal URA requirements, Uniform Relocation Act, which is a federal requirement for anytime federal funds are used and might affect individual residents. So the first phase of the plan, the acquisition, relocation, and demolition of the site, cost around $6 million that the City of Champaign used a Section 108 loan to do. A Section 108 loan is a loan against your future CDBG allocations.
Okay. Can you describe a little, in a little more easily understandable detail about the boundaries of where this development will take place?
Exactly, the boundaries are north of Bradley, between Bradley and the Mobile Home Park, and it is east of Market to the railroad tracks.
Okay. Yep. That's kind of what I figured with 90 units, it had to kind of be that, that entire area.
Well, this Phase 1 of the development includes 90 units that is south of Roper Street. There is a planned Phase 2 that will involve future housing tax credits that will be two senior buildings that will be an additional 90 units. So eventually, we plan to have 180 units at the site.
And the vast majority of these are supposed to be single-family homes?
In the plan right now of the 90 properties, I believe around 76 are single-family, and about 20 or so are multifamily, they're townhouses.
Okay. I mean, I'm just surprised that we didn't see a map or, you know, any drawings or...
I can definitely pass that along.
They exist.
Yeah, the, the plans are still being finalized right now, and they have been changing a little bit recently, but we can definitely pass that along.
And the average cost per unit is about $250,000?
Correct.
Per home?
Mm-hmm.
As I say, my, my house does not cost anywhere near that much, so I'm interested to see what kind of single-family homes they, they come up with.
We, we have pretty detailed plans of the site plan and the mockups of the units. It's not, the cost isn't going purely to amenities. Matt and I discussed this in detail after the last meeting about the cost of developing affordable housing and how it's often more expensive than market-rate housing. Actually, not often, it's almost exclusively more expensive than developing market-rate housing. Some of the reasons for that are the completely new infrastructure that is going in, the fact that we use prevailing wage on, on all of the development, which can increase the cost by up to a third, that we have pretty strict environmental regulations on what can be done at the site, and then subsidizing the developer to be able to charge low rents, you know, for 20, 15 to 20 years. So it, it, it is expensive, but I think we're on pace for other developments that are happening in this community and low for the state.
So it's fair to say that a fair portion of that 260, or 250 to 265,000 per unit cost is not literally all going into the physical structure?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. And we're still waiting on a, a final budget. The, the budget here was done from the low-income housing tax credit application. We're still waiting on a final budget from the developer, and that will be included in the, the rental program agreement in here as Exhibit C in that document. So that, we're looking into that, and one of the requirements for the home program is cost reasonableness and underwriting, and we need to complete our review before we would be, before we'd be able to sign over any funds to the developer to make sure that they are reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Eric.
So Champaign Human Relations Ordinance does have a protected class, prior arrest or conviction record, and age, which is becoming more important to me.
Bill.
I don't want to get into a big discussion on that, but it's not as complete, there's certain, certain felonies that aren't covered by that one. On the, I think one of the unique things about the, this project to me was the lease-purchase program. Is that brand-new? Has, has, have any other local projects used that?
Not in this way. In the past, I know we've had lease-purchase programs. I used to work for the City of Urbana in the, in the 2000s, and we, there was like, Urban League had a lease-purchase program, it was a much shorter term, two to three years. This lease-purchase program is a 15-year lease-purchase program, which we are, the developer has done before, but not to the end of the 15 years. But it's something I was excited about because I think it really touches a market of people that probably would never be able to purchase a home. I know we're going to have to watch it closely, but part of the reason that is, is because, because of the low-income housing tax credits, the, the development has to stay rental for at least 15 years. So that was the restriction, but our ultimate goal is to eventually turn over all of the single-family homes to homeownership units.
And then, was that 6 million acquisition cost included in the 23 million, or is that's...
It's not.
Okay. And then for the, for the project, well, this is described as a loan, they don't make any payments, and at the end of the 20 years, they don't owe us anything, right?
That's right, it's structured as a loan, just in keeping with the federal requirements.
Guarantees, basically.
Yep.
And then, at the end of the 20 years, is that how most of the tax credit finance projects, is that the, is that the length of term of most of them? After 20 years, whoever owns it can sell it to a private company and...
I can't speak for the tax credits. Janelle, I don't know if you know, but for the home program, that's how it works for us.
They almost always option to, in a sense, renew at a different rate. I believe, I don't believe they're able to sell it free on the market, but it, there are, they might be able to, I don't know the full answer to that, but it's something we can look into. But they usually option to, to make it stay affordable. At this, in this particular development, the ownership won't be exclusively developer, the Housing Authority of Champaign County is also a partner in the ownership. And so our likely option, or our, I guess, preferred option would be for the Housing Authority to retain ownership at the end of that time period.
All right, thank you.
Dennis.
I appreciate all the information that you brought to us. I know how difficult it is for some developers to pull together all the resources to complete a project. We've seen the Kerr Avenue project start and stop over a period of eight years or more before finally sinking into a, a project that actually became realized. And I understand that, you know, there's an option here to have the documents reviewed by all the parties and allowing them to have time to do so. So I'll make a motion that we keep Resolution 2018-04013-R in the Committee of the Whole, and that we, I request that we see it again in the next committee meeting of the Whole, April 23, with any further developments or information that we may have learned from that review.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dennis, seconded in by Eric. All right, any discussion? Aaron?
I think I'll have to submit to Dean.
Okay, Dean.
We've got quite a line there. I have no interest whatsoever in getting into a long discussion about this tonight, but I feel that it's important that I'm on record. I am not at all in agreement with this felon thing, and I'm just going to leave it there for tonight. But when they speak about that, please don't include me. Thank you.
All right, Aaron.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the felon thing means, but maybe we could elaborate on, on that at some point. It's very concerning for you to use that type of language about people. But my question was in relationship to the income requirements, is there an income requirement?
There will be, yeah. For, for the home develop, or the home units, we're only expecting there to be two that be funded through our funds in the project. It's 80% of area median income. So for a family of, family of three or four, it would be about 30,000 to 40,000 in household income.
It's a little higher.
It's higher than that?
Yeah. For a family of four, it's like 46 or something.
Okay. But that's the neighborhood that we're talking about.
And is it, is it accurate that none of the homes will actually be for sale until 20 years after?
15 years, correct.
15 years. And then a person can start the lease-purchase program, or they can start it?
No, they, they start immediately and build up good stewardship, I guess, kind of credits towards the purchase of the property, and then that unit, I guess, is kind of attached to that unit. So if a person stays for five years, 15 years, they'll be able to purchase that specific unit.
Okay, so I went through the lease-purchase program at the Urban League, it's how I purchased my home, right? So for the City of Urbana, if you stayed in it for five years, you got $3,000 per year, you got $15,000 off the top of the, the cost of the home. So is that how this is going to work for this as well?
I do not know the details. I was thinking it might be a really great idea to have developer Jim Roberts come to the next Cow meeting. He is very knowledgeable, and he's juggling 1,000 balls right now, but he would probably be very willing to come and answer those specific questions for you.
So for me, one of the reasons why I was asking it, because I was thinking of the lease-purchase program, but I was also thinking about another item that we're going to deal with coming up for the private active, activity bonds. And would private activity bonds be able to, be used for lease-purchase programs? So since I, I thought I read that it was for homeownership, is a possibility for low-income housing. But the possibility of partnering with a program or a development like Bristol, or any other lease-purchase program in the City of Urbana to use the funds for our city, would we be able to do something like that? So that's probably not for you guys, but, um...
Let's hold off on that and, and address it when we get to the next agenda. Thank you.
That's fine.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that, that moves, it stays in committee, and it will be in committee on April 23, Committee of the Whole.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Resolution Number 2018-04014-R, Resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with the private activity bond issues, single-family mortgage revenue bonds, and related matters. Community Development.
Yes, so the issue before the council is in regards to the use of our private activity bond cap or volume cap. In general, a private activity bond cap is a bond issued by or on behalf of a local or state government for the purpose of financing the project of a private user. And they can be used to finance various types of facilities, including family, multifamily housing projects. By ceding to another entity, like, as recommended to the Illinois Assist or the Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority, we, the city reserves the right to access the bonds, and therefore, we would not lose their use. So the options include reserving the bond cap for specific projects, such as participating in home buyer assistance programs, or reserving for neighborhood initiatives through the Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority. The memo states about the Illinois Assist program, in which they have a mortgage credit certificate that allows qualifying borrowers to receive an annual federal income tax credit. And then through Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority, they are able to serve as the issuer of the bonds, and that removes any financial liability on the part of the city. And so there is no fiscal impact to the city budget or to our budget in ceding the volume bond cap to EIA-EDA. And for the Illinois Assist program, the city would also have no liability, because the city would not be the bond issuer. So, and then also, with, with the loans generated, it would, the city would realize an increase in property taxes for new home buyers. And in the memo, there was a map showing the originations for 2017, along with the list of the loan amounts. It was 2.3 million. So at its March 27, 2018 regular meeting, the Urbana Community Development Commission unanimously recommended that the Urbana City Council approve an allocation in the following manner. Half of the allocation of $4,331,250 in the amount of $2,165,625 from the City of Urbana bond cap for the Assist program, and the other half to Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority to be used for possible neighborhood initiatives. And staff concurs with the recommendation. And now I will answer your questions.
We'll start with Aaron.
So my first question was in relationship to these private activity bonds being able to be used, I don't know, Danielle, our township supervisor, mentioned various different things about low-income housing, the need for that, shelters, I saw that something where the money could be used for YMCA's or hospitals and things like that. I, I just, I'm not sure as to why we don't use those funds ourselves and guarantee a particular, maybe a tax benefit from it, or just to service to our own, to our own residents in, in the City of Urbana.
Well, we have been ceding to EIA-EDA for several years, and we do have a certain amount set aside for housing. And I'd actually had the executive director email me about possible uses for, say, the rehabbing of an old school into housing, so that that was eligible, that it doesn't matter what the former use was, as long as it's a new use, because there's certain income limits when you use it for multifamily housing. The key with residential is that 20% of the units have to be made available for individuals at 50% or lower of the area's median income, or 40% of the units at 60% of the income. So that is what's required for residential. And right now, we have, per their email, we've, we've set aside, we have at least like 8.3 million, and adding this would make it like over 10 million that would be available.
Well, one of the things that struck me in reading through it was that it was, it sounded like we could use the money for a partnership with private developers.
Yes.
Right? So I'm not quite, I'm just trying to figure out why we wouldn't be able to use that for... One of the questions I had when we were talking with the company from Indiana about the development across the street, about doing the development, was why we couldn't have affordable housing a part of that project. a part of that project instead of all market rate. And so I'm wondering why we couldn't have these private activity bonds worked into a deal for a development like that that guarantees a level of low income or affordable housing as a part of the project.
Yes. Actually, some of the developments, the developers, when they get the nine percent low income housing tax credits, this does not work with that. But if a developer received the four percent, which is less money, less, and is non-competitive, then according to the executive director at EIEDA, these private activity bond caps work well with that.
So.
Together. So if there was a developer that was willing to go for the four percent, and this, you know, in fact, the executive director said he would be willing, because it is complicated and would be willing to meet with the developer to talk about this option.
So one of the, I'm just trying to work through this, and I'm sure you would do the minutia, it's just a thought and idea that I'm trying to think through a little bit. So if we, when we cede the money to the other organizations, it's reminiscent, in my opinion, to TIF, because I haven't seen, for instance, EI, the different companies, I keep forgetting the acronyms, or Assist, report to us, say, here's what we did with that money, here's how, what it produced for tax revenue or whatever for the City of Urbana. And so that's what the benefit is going to be. It says that they could do these impossible neighborhood things, so that's a lot of money to for.
Right.
To cede when we could actually use it and work it into deals ourselves and know where the money is going and what the outcomes are going to be.
Right. And that was our purpose, was to set aside to another, to them to reserve it for us for a housing development.
But it also sounds like they're like, but if you don't want to do that, we'll take it all and use it ourselves.
No, they clearly stated that it's reserved for us through EIEDA.
I saw it reserved for six months, but then I saw something about, you know, we could utilize it if you don't have a.
I was given like a three-year timeframe, is what he told me.
Okay.
All right, Bill.
So just to make sure I understand it correctly, this isn't real cash money. This is the ability for somebody to borrow the money at presumably a low interest rate or tax benefit or something so that they.
Yes.
Can, instead of borrowing at a twelve percent from a bank or seven percent or something, it comes out to something like two or three percent or whatever.
Right.
So it makes their project more affordable, but they still have to generate the money, some kind of revenue in order to pay it back and pay off the bond. So it's, the four million isn't four million, it's the four million coming from the state or, I guess it's the state, and then they pay it back. It's basically guaranteed bond, and they get a no-better deal on it. It's like, it sounds like it's mostly a matter of making the numbers work and something like that, and sometimes it will and sometimes it won't, but depending on the mix of financing and stuff. And so this, when we cede this volume cap, the part that doesn't go to the Illinois Assist part, that entity can, if there's a big project that a local developer wants to do, or somebody wants to do locally, they can actually provide more than this four million, so part that some that we have ceded, maybe some other towns have ceded. If there is a big project that comes up, they could cede twenty million to do a big project locally.
Yes.
Okay. That's one of the advantages to doing this, I think.
Dennis.
And to read the first chap, the first paragraph under the subhead Issues on page one, it does say that, "In the event that the city does not allocate its private activity bond cap for a specific project or purpose as of May first, the unallocated bond cap will be reserved to the governor's office on June the first, under the Home Rule pool." In other words, if you want to lose your budget and have it go back to the state, you do nothing. But if you want to keep that funding, local, but you don't have a project that's ready to go, shovel-ready at this moment, because maybe you have some great ideas, but there's not a developer that's on the board that's gonna use this money right now, then these bond caps can be, what's the word?
Seated.
Seated, thank you. Seated to an agency that could use them for your benefit. And that's the deal.
Diane.
And can you, Kelly, explain why it's actually financially a better thing for the city to cede that authority in terms of the risk?
Well, I mean, if, having another entity that has the experience and can do it, I mean, otherwise, if the city did it, I mean, I don't know if there's anybody really that knows how to do this, we would have, it would just be very expensive, I think, for the city. And time-wise, to try to issue these like on our own, I know I don't have the experience. So by ceding it to another entity that has that experience, I think, is the best way to go.
Just one last piece for me. So I understand that it's not actual cash. But what I do understand is that when other entities come to you and say, hey, we'll take that off your hands, somewhere, somebody's gonna make money off of it, right? And so if we don't have the capacity to do that, I understand that. But, I mean, it's not lost on me that somebody's gonna use it to their advantage, and if we can't, then I understand that.
There's also fees, I think, that are associated, and so by having the, another entity do the bonding and issuing, then there's like no fees to the city.
Correct. Thank you.
So my question is, kind of along the lines of Aaron, I'm curious, what's in it for these two organizations, for us to get, to cede this to them? How are they making money, basically?
That's a good question. I'm assuming that there's, you know, fees and things like that, that they get, because it's Stern Brothers with the Illinois Assist, and it's actually like some of the collar counties up in Chicago that they work together. So with the Assist, they have been doing loans for home buyers, new construction and stuff, so they probably get fees and things that way. That is something I can certainly check on to find out.
I would be very interested in knowing how they're making money off of it, yeah, absolutely. Eric.
I will move, taking, you know, approving the recommendation of staff and the commission, or I will recommend moving this to the City Council with the recommendation that they approve the recommendation of staff and commission.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Bill. I just want to make a note, we are moving Resolution number 2018-04014R. Is that correct, Eric? Because there are two here that are very similar. I just want to confirm.
Yes, this is.
Okay.
Ah, yes.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, because the ten.
Aaron, would you like to speak, Aaron?
Oh, yes. Thank you for calling on me, Madam Chair. So nice of you. The, the next resolution requires us to move the money or to approve it, right? It's not the same, that's the dividing of it, is the second one.
One is EIEDA and the other is Assist. So I moved Assist.
It's the other fifty percent.
Oh, okay, I get it now. All right, and it's, all right, so, okay.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. Bill?
I'll move since Resolution number 2018-044-015R to City Council with the recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. Any discussion?
Yes.
Aaron.
I would like us to, well, just for the record, I certainly look forward to hearing Kelly's explanation of how the other entities are going to make money. It's important to me, as we are fiscally strapped ourselves, for us to, before we sort of hand over the opportunity for someone else to make money that we could use if we knew how to, or if we possibly had the capacity to, I'd like to know, I think it would help us to understand how they're making money to see whether or not we could use it for ourselves. So in order for me to support it, I want to see exactly what that looks like, how other, these other entities are gonna use it to make money.
Dennis.
So I'm wondering, then, if we were trying to become a developer ourselves, that's the only way that we could actually benefit from this? That we would actually, the city would have to become the developer, is that correct?
Possibly.
Which I know we don't like to do, because it's a pitfall of potential issues.
I mean.
Eric.
We partner with private, with private entities all the time, because they have specialized expertise in building houses, in moving financial instruments, which is the case here, and so forth, because otherwise, if we didn't do that, we would have to develop all of that expertise in-house, and that's just impossible. I mean, these folks move money, and anybody who develops expertise in moving money from A to B, some of it rubs off. That's how they make their cut.
Mayor Marlowe.
And we'd also have to hire the attorneys who specialize in doing this very thing, because we do not have that expertise in-house either.
Okay, so I'm gonna beat this horse.
Aaron, would you like to say something? Can you hold on for a second? I think Jared, did you, did you want to say something?
No.
No? Okay, Aaron.
Thank you. I was just trying to understand that if this is an instrument, as Eric has described it, that can be used as a part of a development, what I read said that it could be used for nonprofit stuff, but you could work it with private developers. So if, for instance, we have developers who are interested in doing minority participation goals, but they don't necessarily have to do it, but they know that that's our interest, and that's what we're working towards, and they're willing to add that component into their deal, there could be a developer who says that we want to, we'll be willing to do the deal using these private activity bonds, and at the four percent that you described, and it could mean more money comes to the City of Urbana, possibly if we used those private activity bonds, as opposed to just saying we don't want the responsibility of dealing with them. What I'm trying to figure out, and what I'm asking you guys to work with me on, is to figure out, is it more money for us if we find a way to work it into a deal, or is it less money if we just, or is it more money for us and saves us the headache if we just simply cede it? That's all I'm asking for. I don't think there's too much to ask for.
I'm done.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, the last resolution for the evening, Resolution number 2018-04016R, Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement amending amendment between the City of Urbana and the Illinois Department of Revenue for inspections of liquor license holders on the premises. Fire Department.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jared.
Seeing as how this ordinance has the word liquor in it, and pursuant to the State of Illinois Liquor Control Act of nineteen thirty-four, I can't talk about this, so I'm gonna have to recuse myself.
All right, thank you. Fire Chief.
Okay, before you use an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Illinois Department of Revenue, that the original agreement was entered into on January third, and it had the Illinois, us, the Illinois Department of Revenue paying us part of our fee for doing the inspection upfront, the second half after the inspection was done. Illinois Department of Revenue on their own proposed an amendment which would have them paying the entire amount upfront. And I want to note, this is the way the agreement was for the two thousand seventeen inspections. They changed it for two thousand eighteen, and this is now changing it back to the way it was in two thousand seventeen. And it was their proposal.
All right, any questions for the chief? I'll entertain a motion.
Um.
Yes, I would like to move Resolution 2018-04-016R to Council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, with no further business before this committee, we are adjourned. Thank you.